Good evening. We welcome you to our meeting this evening. I would like to let you know that Commissioner Marley, there's a family illness and he will not be with us this evening. However, if there were a need to contact him, we can do that by phone if needed. But do keep his family in your prayers as they go through whatever the circumstances are. At this time, we have with us this evening Pastor Michael Mathis from Mission Phil Ministries to lead us in our invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance. If you all will, please rise.
Oh Lord God, we are grateful for your presence here this evening. And we thank you for your loving kindness, especially your mercy upon all of us. And even in that, Lord, we thank you that wherever we have erred and been not willing to do things, God, the way that you wanted them done, we thank you that in this moment of time, we can ask for your forgiveness and knowing beyond the shadow of a doubt, God, that we are forgiven. We thank you for that. We're always so very grateful, God, for the leadership that you have put in place and that you continue to strategically place people in positions of leadership, even sometimes when we don't understand why we thank you for the way that you do things. We are especially grateful for our mayor Jackie Warner, God, and her leadership and how she continues to press on. We thank you for her life, her character, and we thank you for how you continue to keep her head of protection all around her family. Also, God, not only her, but the rest of the board members that's so willing to support her, Lord, doing the things that they are assigned to do. We thank you for the bond of unity here with the town council and not just with the council, God, but the rest that help to make this team complete, that the town of Hope Mills would continue to prosper in so many ways. We're so grateful for that, Lord, and how you continue, God, to... When money's coming to the state of North Carolina, Lord, we pray that you'll continue to help the officials here in Cumberland County as they distribute the funds, God, that Hope Mills would get their fair share and even maybe a little bit more. We thank you for how this town is prospering and the many buildings are going up, especially the brand-new John W. Hodges Public Safety Building. Thank you for the completion of that, Lord, and its purpose. We continue, God, to be grateful and always remembering our first responders. Asking you, God, to keep angels encamped at their backs. These are very dangerous times now. We never know when danger is lurking very near. And their willingness, God, to put their lives in harm's way, God, we always, God, ask that you would please keep them shielded against all harm. Danger's gonna be part of their job, but all harm to them, God, we pray that you would keep them. And now, Lord, as we move forward, we ask, God, that you would continue to endow the board with your godly wisdom. Men have wisdom with your godly wisdom. Lord, that this town would continue to prosper and people would love it. We thank you, God, for the things that you have in store for the town of Hope Mills in 2023. Now, Lord, as the agenda is discussed, we ask, God, that we would be attentive and do those things, God, that we're required to do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions from our agenda that is before you?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to add a closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318, 11A3 to consult with your attorney on matters within the attorney-client privilege and pursuant to NCGS 143-318, 11A6 to discuss personnel matters.
Okay, we'll add that item to after new business, so it'll be at the end of our meeting. So I have a recommendation and having a closed session at the end of the meeting, is there any other additions or deletions to our agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that addition?
Make a motion.
Got a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The next thing we have on our agenda is official comments, and we will start this evening with Commissioner Legg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's nice to see that they're continuing to work by demolishing the fire department to finish that project up for us and the parking lot. Next week, hopefully, we can park out in the parking lot. I want to compliment the town manager for... And the department heads for pushing that project forward. We've been fighting for this parking lot for probably eight years, and we just got it. So, thank you very much to those people, and I hope everything's okay with Mr. Marley's family. And that'll be it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mitchell?
Good evening. Thanks for coming out. Done.
Commissioner Scrola?
What he said. Thank you.
Mayor Protiem?
I would just like to remind everybody that our third Hope class is taking place at the Parks and Rec building starting tonight. I do believe they may have a couple of open seats, and there will be a fourth class that will begin in April. That'll be all. Thank you for coming out as well.
Thank you. This evening, I would like to, first of all, let you all know how much I appreciate you being here. Those of you that have been deleted from my mayor's page, I appreciate your coming out this evening. Those of you that have been concerned about not being able to access full... Or not have full access to my mayor's page, I would like you to know, first of all, that the way my pages are set up, there are three. There's a mayor's page, there's a Carleen's of Hope Mills page, and there's also a personal page. And I was under the impression that the personal page and the Carleen's business page did not affect my mayor's page. However, we have now determined that it does affect, because if I block you on either of those two places, pages, it then transfers with you, if there's a comment, to my mayor's page, so that you don't get access to that. So we have had a lawsuit filed against the town of Hope Mills and my role as mayor. That lawsuit is now at the stage of being in a settlement, and part of that settlement is that I have been provided a statement that I am to read to the town at a public forum, which is this evening, and I at this time will do that. And this statement, again, has been written for me by the attorney and probably the plaintiff also, but this is a statement that has been provided. "Over the past several years, I have hidden and deleted posts and comments and blocked people from Facebook pages that I use as a forum to interact with citizens on issues related to the town of Hope Mills in my role as your mayor. I understand that these actions violate the rights of some citizens, preventing them access to discussions and information on issues affecting our town that I have shared as your mayor. As a result of my actions, a lawsuit has been filed against me. I realize that deleting and hiding posts and comments and blocking users had the effect of excluding some citizens from what was originally intended to be a space for all citizens of Hope Mills to connect with me as mayor and each other to discuss ongoing issues with the town. Now I must apologize for my actions. Going forward, I will make a clear distinction between my personal Facebook page, which will be unrelated to my role as mayor, and my mayor's page, which will continue to be used as a forum for all citizens to interact with me and each other on issues related to the town of Hope Mills. And again, as my statement has always been, we're moving forward in Hope Mills. This is behind us. We're moving forward. There's a lot of things happening at Hope Mills. As one person said, Hope Mills is on fire, and I'm excited about that. This board, this particular board, has seen so much accomplished in such a short period of time, and it's excellent to know that the Public Safety Building, the things that are happening, great things are happening in Hope Mills. And thank you Reverend Mathis for your kind words as we go forward." Next thing on our agenda is presentations, and the first presentation is Public Safety Building Project Update, presented by Scott Garner, the architect, and a consideration of a change order for Public Safety Center project in an amount of $2,545.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm glad to be here with you to give you a report tonight. We have good news, which I think Commissioner Legg stole my thunder telling you about the parking lot. It has been a long time in preparation and coming, and they've done a great job of putting it together pretty quickly, and so next week, we'll have some parking back there, which will be very well appreciated, I'm sure. One item I might add about that is the landscaping on that part of the project will be done by Parks and Rec, and we found they could do it more economically than the contractor could, and they were willing to do it, so they're taking that over. The building had a temporary certificate of occupancy issued on 11/21/23. The building is essentially complete. There are some small things, specialty items, that still have to go in that will happen. We are fine-tuning and adjusting and coordinating final things. We're working through the punch list, and for your information, I have a copy of the punch list. This is the punch list for the building. It's about 40 pages of things the contractor has to correct prior to final completion of that building. We are starting on Phase Three of the project with the demolition of the fire station, and we will also involve the construction of the sewer line for the library, the landscaping, the driveway for the fire station, and expect this to take about two months. And so, we're moving along pretty well. We're going through the... If you're on a farm, they'd say we're on the short roads. I found a lot of people don't know what that means, but it means there is a light at the end of the tunnel. We're not there yet, but we're getting there, so we're glad of that. The next part of the report is Change Order 12, which you were furnished notes about that. I'll go briefly through them, and if you have questions, I'll be glad to address them. And we'll talk about it. The first one, first item is four doors were identified by the building inspector to be converted as exit ways from the building. The plans were reviewed in my office. We did them in accordance with the code. They were viewed in Raleigh. Two or three agencies have looked at them and thought it was fine. The building inspector thought it would be safer to make these doors exits. In looking at that with him, I agree with him, and the cost for that is $2,156. I think that's a matter of safety. The second item are technology items for the VORIP and the site adapter, and that's so that the intercom and the telephone system can talk to each other. These technology guys know a lot, but they don't know how all of this stuff works until they try it. And so, in that case, they tried an adapter. It didn't work. We returned it, and we got credit for it, so that price came down. The other part of that change is for the... To complete the safe haven at the front door, it's a telephone, which will lock the door at the front, and also a touchscreen for the rear gate. And the price for that is $7,461. The third item is the electricity from the time that the town took over the building until... From the time that the TCO was issued until the town had the meter put in its name. It took Duke Power a few days to get out here and do it, and that's $1,835. The next item, number four, is a credit. The life cuts both ways. If we add work, we have to add money. If we take work away, we get a credit. In this case, we were able to take away the TV brackets. The TV brackets came with the TVs. We did not need to purchase them, so we got a credit for that. And then we were able to reuse the taps for the water, domestic water, and the sewer, and we got a credit for that, not the meter, but the tap. There's a tap fee for everything, so that's it. The net amount of the change is $2,535. And I think in what I sent to you, I showed the amount for the adapter is $2,064. It's actually $2,054, so that makes the difference. Instead of being $2,045, it's $2,035, which is the net amount for this change. Do we have questions or comments about these items?
Does anyone have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
When is the expected finish date?
The expected finish date is in March. That's the total date that's allowed for that. I don't know the exact day, but I think... I don't know the exact date, but it's March.
I think we have something like the 30th, don't we, for ribbon cutting?
So the... If you want me to... I mean, the TCO expires 180 days after issuance, so that'd be like May 12th. So the CO has to be issued full completion on everything by then? So, yeah, I mean, obviously, it just commenced Phase Three this morning, so we're hoping that they're wrapped up in like in March.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I think within two months, we should be finished. Within two months.
We gotta remove all of that concrete under the old fire station. We're gonna pave over it.
They will take it up. They will remove it. The contractor will remove it.
I love it.
Madam Mayor, it's just more so a comment than anything. Probably for future, the way this change order is written out is kind of self-explanatory. And personally, I feel that there's no need for them to go down each line item to explain what it is unless we have a question, and that would kind of save a little time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to...
I'll make the motion.
To approve the change order?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the change order for the Public Safety in the amount of $2,535.
Correct.
Okay. Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We are looking forward to completion. We will probably have a few more coordination items. Hopefully, they will be very small. But we live very carefully at the money, and not everything that the contractor requests gets to you. A lot of it gets cut off before time, so thank you very much. We appreciate it. We're looking forward to the ribbon cutting.
Thank you, sir.
The next item on our agenda, before I read that, we do have in the back table a sign-up sheet and also paperwork from the Cumberland County Community Development Department, and it's the Home Investment Partnerships Program, American Rescue Plan, ARP document, and it's for citizens to review. This is something that they request each year, and this particular year, what we've done is we've got it at the back table, and then once this meeting's over, we'll have it in the front lobby for citizens to look at. And it's just, again, it's community development funding that they want to make sure that all of our citizens are aware of it. And thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is proclamation recognizing January 22nd to 28th, "Whereas all children in Hope Mills should have access to the highest quality education possible. Whereas from Alaska to New York, America will light up in yellow and red to raise awareness about K-12 education opportunities during National School Choice Week 2023. Whereas there are a variety of school choice options available for many of the 2.3 million children living in North Carolina, families in North Carolina can choose from traditional public schools, public charter schools, public magnet schools, private schools, online academics, and homeschooling. Whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the diversity of our community. Whereas Hope Mills has many highly qualified teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children. Whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jackie Warner, do hereby recognize January 22nd to January 28th, 2023 as Hope Mills School Choice Week, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens." The next have a proclamation we recognize in February 3rd. "Whereas National Wear Red Day is observed annual on the first Friday in February, whereas heart disease and stroke kill one in three women. Whereas women can take action to protect their heart health and reduce heart disease by preventing and controlling risk factors for the disease, such as smoking, high blood pressure, overweight, obesity, physical inactivity, age, and various others. Whereas women's health remains a priority for families, communities, and governments. Whereas GoRedForWomen.org is building awareness of women's heart disease risk and empowering them to reduce and prevent heart disease. Whereas women need to make heart health a priority for themselves, their families, and take action to improve their heart health. Now therefore, I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim Friday, February 3rd, 2023 as Wear Red Day in the town of Hope Mills, and encourage all of our citizens and staff to work together to promote and improve the health of women and increase understanding of heart disease." My next proclamation is recognizing February as Black History Month. "Whereas African-Americans have resisted historic and ongoing oppression in all forms, especially the racial terrorism of lynching, racial programs, and police killings since their arrival upon these shores. The 2023 theme, Black Resistance, acknowledges these efforts to advocate for a dignified, self-determined life and a just democratic society in the United States and beyond the United States political jurisdiction. Whereas the 1950s and 1970s in the United States was defined by actions such as sit-ins, boycotts, walkouts, and strikes by Black people and white allies in the fight for justice against discrimination in all sectors of society, from employment to education to housing. Whereas Black people have sought ways to nurture and protect Black lives and for autonomy of their physical and intellectual bodies through armed resistance, voluntary immigration, nonviolence, education, literature, sports, media, and legislation in politics. Black-led institutions and affiliations have lobbied, litigated, legislated, protested, and achieved success. Whereas by resisting, Black people have achieved triumphs, successes, and progress as seen in the end of chattel slavery, dismantling of Jim and Jane Crowe segregation in the South, increased political representation at all levels of government, desegregation of educational institutions, the passage of Civil Rights Acts of 1964, the opening of the Smithsonian National Museum of African-American History in DC, and increased diverse representation of Black experiences in media. Black resistance strategies have served as a model for every other movement in the country. Thus, the legacy importance of these actions cannot be understated. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and commissioners of Town of Hope Mills, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of February, Black History Month, and urge all citizens of our community to give full regard to the past and continuing service of African-Americans in our town, our state, and our union." Next, we have public hearings, and at this time, the public hearing for annexation A 2022-07, Crosspoint Church property at 7050 Rockfish Road. If annexation is approved, consideration to authorize staff to begin initial zoning process of C2P planned service retail. And I turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
I will not keep you guys long. This is simply a final hearing for the annexation of Crosspoint Church. My town clerk set the public hearing for tonight at the last meeting. In your staff report, as the mayor indicated, we are asking for the C2P planned service retail as authorization to start the initial zoning. Plan review staff has actually met extensively with members of the church. They are expanding the church. They are adding a school. They're adding a thrift store. I think one other use, and so the C2P is needed to encompass all those uses. But they approached us about maybe September last year, very even, to the time of Hope Mills limits. And so this is the next step in the process after authorization to C2P will begin the process with the planning.
Any questions?
Motion to open public hearing.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this annexation? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this annexation? Okay, public hearing is closed, and at this time, do we have a recommendation from the board?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
It's obvious that this land is right in the middle of future Town of Hope Mills property, and it's right across the road now, so I'd make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the annexation of Crosspoint Church property at 7050 Rockfish Road. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have public comments. At this time, I'd like to recognize Pamela Sinclair to come to the podium. If you'll please give your address, and then you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Board of Commissioners. I'm Pamela Sinclair, and I live at 3756 Golf U. Road in the city of Hope Mills. And my topics tonight, I have three topics. The first one being safety of Golf U. Road in the curve. I am right there as the curve begins, and as you well know, Saturday night, we had a wreck which ended up in my yard with the death of a young girl. The safety of that curve is becoming a great concern. Her accident was not the first I've seen living there. I have seen a guy fly off a motorcycle and land in the trees. I have seen cars hit trees, and I have seen vehicles flip coming through that curve, whether it's coming up or down. The safety of that curve, there is a sign, a couple houses, before you get to the curve on one side. But at dark, that light that shines over is not enough. That curve needs some kind of guardrails or something with reflectors to let people know that that is a curve there, and it is sharper than what it seems to be when they take it. Also, there is a deep hole that comes in that curve that the county... I mean, the city has fixed by filling in with dirt, but every time it rains, it washes it out, and that hole gets deeper. So had that girl taken the right-hand side of the road, she would have probably hit that hole and flew off and flipped her car. So she had no side shoulder to go to, and so that is the other concern with that. My second agenda was the driveway, and it kind of ties into safety. When the hurricanes came, they built the road up a little bit right there at my driveway and several of my neighbors. When they did that, it caused our driveways to scrub if you have a lower car coming out of... Because I sit up on the hill, so when the cars go out of the driveway or in the driveway, lower cars scrub. I have one lower car and one higher car. My higher car is fine, but the lower car scrubs. It is also a safety concern, because when the mailman tries to deliver mail, the road is kind of up in a point like that. So when he pulls off, he's putting a rut where I've put rocks. I've got pictures to show. I've got rocks there. He puts a rut there with one tire, and his other tire is hanging off into the middle of the road. I have went to the post office several times with no luck, no, you know, consideration from them to the postmaster to please let me move my mailbox back some so that he could pull totally off the road. I have not had no luck with that. So my driveway, that road being leveled out in some way to kind of take the edge off of that curve needs to happen. And then my last thing is the cleanup of Hope Mills. I'm right there at the no littering sign. I know you can't help it. People litter all the time. But the fallen trees on the golf course, the broken bricks at the entrance to it, the trash that's being thrown out, and now the debris from this wreck that has happened that is all over my side and the other side is not being cleaned. But yet, if my yard grows too high with grass, I get a litter. So therefore, this town is a beautiful town. We have a beautiful little city here, and I want to see it kept that way. But Golf U. Road is being neglected in more ways than one. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
What portion, because I don't go down Golf U., what... Is it the curve? Because I'm looking at the map right now. Is it by Fescue Court and Permestone Lake Road? I'm not sure. Is that the curve?
Just before that.
Just... Yeah.
And it doesn't look to be a bad curve, but it is bad when you get into it. It's right there at the end of the golf course.
Okay, I see. Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I believe that that could be addressed during the widening of that road when DOT does that project.
And because we've had another accident there, this is something that we can draw attention to, because they've done studies about what they're to do with that, with Golf U. Road out to I-295. So this will be something that is bad that it had to happen, but it is something that we can probably use as a means to maybe get some things sped up a little bit.
Is that road gonna be widened all the way down to where we are?
It will. Eventually, it will go from... All the way from Rockfish Road all the way out to 295. So the intent would be for all of that probably will be straightened out a good bit of it, I would imagine, and probably there's a plan somewhere that we might could even access, so you could look at it. But the main thing is, we can ask, and the things that you've recommended can be something that we can recommend that come take a look at, so thank you.
That needs to be straightened out a little bit in that curve. It doesn't look rough, but it is, and if it could be straightened out some, that would be great. You can't just widen it and leave a curve there.
Right.
Because if you do, then they're gonna end up coming into one of the houses when they... Because if you do, then they're going to end up coming into one of the houses when they come around the curve. So somehow, and I don't know how that would work, being that you have the apartments right there too. So I don't know how you can do that at the end of the golf course with that. But DOT can figure it out.
Okay, and we'll do a referral to DOT.
DOT has that scheduled. I don't think it's set for seven, eight years. Is that already done?
We don't have it scheduled.
Not scheduled, but it's on our list.
Yeah. Okay, thank you so much. All right, next, we have our consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you would like to pull for further discussion? Or do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda that's before you?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Thank you very much. We do not have any old business, new business. Discussion seeking direction from the Board of Commissioners regarding programming for the chapel. And my understanding is the two Megans are here? So from Parks and Rec, we have representative to tell us about some suggestions.
So Megan's just handing out a kind of proposal that we've put together, our whole department has put together with maintenance, programming, because ultimately Parks and Rec is going to be responsible for operating operations of the chapel, as well as the upkeep and all of that. So we just, in a nutshell, we're here just to get some type of direction or goal for what you guys see the chapel being utilized for. And we have pointed out some things that we could certainly use it for. Right now, we are maxed out at the rec center and at Broward Park. We've had to turn, excuse me, turn down four or five potential new programming opportunities because we don't have the space for them at the rec center. So what we would propose to do with the chapel would be to remove the pews to be able to utilize that space for meetings, more passive programs, it's carpeted, so we couldn't have any type of athletic type of deals there, dances.
More like arts and cultural, theater groups.
I mean, we go into a lot of detail about it, but we just wanted to get your ideas and see what you guys really wanted it to be for. We have set up potentially a rental possibility. We do serve a lot of community groups at the rec center, Girl Scouts, stuff like that, that are just needing a meeting room. And that was some of the things that we discussed.
Yeah. Now, season fix. Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Here's a suggestion. We have our event planner, have our park and recreation department, we have our park and recreation committee. Y'all get together, put together a plan, and present it to us. That's the easy fix. I mean, but, I mean what your plan is about the events that you want to have, all the things that you want to do.
This is, I mean, this is what we'd like to happen. As far as getting the most monetary value back, like I said, we're busting at the seams. We don't have the space, we turned some pretty cool programs down because we can't have some. And if we had another area that we could move some of the more passive meetings and workshops or whatnot to the chapel, and even open it up for more meeting space, real space and all that, we would get some money in return for the half a million dollars.
Okay, Commissioners.
One, I'd like to thank, it was Jamie and Jared. They're the ones that, so if you look at the picture of the storage closet.
Yeah, you just, we were all, the whole department was there right before you got there.
Yeah, we, I mean, they were very helpful, and we squeezed everything that was from the Historic Preservation Committee into that closet. My question is, have you talked with them about how many pews
Right.
were going to be removed? Because I know they talked about a few, but now it's saying all but six. And then if you remove those pews, what are you going to do with them?
So we had a couple options. One thing with all of the stuff that was put into that closet, there is no custodial closet there or at, or in the bathroom.
Yeah.
For Parks and Recreation to continue to upkeep and stuff, they need to have somewhere to store, props, toilet paper, towels, all the good stuff. So that closet where HBC stuff is currently, I'm offering for us to sit down with them to go through it, and whatever we all deem as historical significance to Hope Mills, we can get a play case or whatever it would be in the chapel. So it kind of has a two-fold museum-esque type feel, where it could be rented out for a school to do a history lesson on Hope Mills, or whatever it may be. But then it's up to us to decide what, and y'all, I guess, what to do with the excess stuff. The, as far as the pews, Megan had a good idea. We could repurpose the wood with them, build picnic tables, put it at Future Heritage Park, put it at Lake, put it near the new park, playground.
See, my concern is this now, because I already went through all that stuff. I purchased the boxes to store the stuff in, and HBC doesn't have a liaison that is from Parks and Rec or anyone. So, and I'm not even the liaison from the Board of Commissioners. That's Brian Marley, but I've been stepping in. You guys need to have a sit-down with them before this stuff gets touched even more so and stuff gets removed, because they are going to literally raise hell.
Which I totally agree with and understand, and I think a conversation is had. But at what point does a committee dictate more than what us as employees? You know what I'm saying? Like, I get, I understand the significance of it all and the pews and whatnot. And if that's the way, if that's the route you guys want us to take, then we'll take it. But at the same time, there is a need on our end for space and all of that. So if it's just...
Well, not, I'm going to be the devil's advocate. I'm sorry, do you want?
There's one thing to keep in consideration. When we did the chapel, everybody was talking about that place being used to hold weddings in. So all those things I'll be taking into consideration. So you need to do a thorough analysis, thorough research to make sure that we're meeting that agreement of the terms that was made when we started doing this project. That's another thing, to avoid any issues.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I think that what you're saying is, we will not get full usage of this chapel if these pews are not removed. And we are also using it a lot for storage. So we're going to deny our citizens being able to use programming and doing a lot of things because of storage and waiting for people to rent it for weddings?
Or because they don't want to get rid of the pews?
I don't think that's fair to most of the citizens of Hope Mills. That's just my opinion. I do think there needs to be a conversation that needs to be had, but it's not for storage. We've put a lot of money and time into the building for it to be used. And I think it will get a full use like this.
I do too.
I don't think you're getting a lot of wedding requests. I think it can be used for that, but I think it can also be used for a lot of other stuff. And it can, you know, the citizens will get better use of it and get the feel of Hope Mills history if we make this change. That's just my, that's my opinion.
And that's kind of where we're at. We can still do weddings. We can do wedding bower noodles. We could do baby showers. I mean, the possibilities are unlimited.
But the way it's set up right now as a church with the pews severely limits the different programs that we can put in that building. And like she said, even if we remove the pews, it doesn't limit the fact that we can not have weddings there.
Right.
But the way it is right now, it's not a very big building. And because there are so many pews, it just limits the amount of users that we can use it. And with the amount of money that the town spent on that building to put those bathrooms in, I live here, I pay taxes here, I want that building to be used as much as possible. But right now, personally, I think it's very limited.
It's very what?
Very limited.
Yeah, I agree. I think it should be a multi-purpose, have multi-purpose use. But at the same time, we have to still be considerate of the individuals that have vested interest in that, because that has not been, that was not an easy piece right there to work through. And I think, I mean, you can not make everybody happy, but at the same time, we can try our very best to find a happy media somewhere. And I'm sure it's doable, because you got about, what, pretty close to 15, maybe almost 18 pews in there? Looked like, just a rough guess. I'm not sure. 16. So. All right. So, I mean, and so you say, we're going to move six. I mean, you really have to take a good look at that, is what I'm saying.
Madam Mayor. Yes.
I think they have, but I also think that it's all of our tax money that goes into that building, not just a small few. And I think for it to be fully utilized for most citizens for the Town of Hope Mills, I believe that we need to look at working with the Historic Preservation Committee. But all of us pay our tax dollars to pay for the renovations and everything that we've done there. So I think we need to take that into consideration.
Absolutely, and that's why I came up with the idea, not really sure what it would be at the final end of it, but using those pews, keeping them in the town, refurbishing them in some way so that they still are part of the town. We can put a plaque on it saying that it came from that chapel, whatever it may be. But the way it is, the way it stands right now, it's very limited. And if we want to use that building to make some sort of money back, whether it be with rentals or programs or whatever, right now, the way it stands is very limited.
Madam Mayor, it's my personal view that that church is not a storage building. If we store the pews at a storage building somewhere, it's going to have to be heat regulated. Because didn't we just spend quite a bit of money on those pews? If I'm not wrong?
Yeah.
We spent quite a bit of money on the pews and refurbishing those.
The pews, yes. The money, there was money for interior where it was done. Yeah. They did, Mr. Gray did work on the inside. And that money, the only thing that he didn't do, my understanding was, was attach the prayer benches and the things on the back.
Book corners?
Yeah. The only question I have is that, not bring up bad news, but you remember the Parsonage House? We're still reaping benefits from that, even though it was very necessary. We've not spent as much money as would have cost us to renovate and redo that house to make it so we could use it. I mean, it was a very wise financial decision. And I've still got pictures of me pushing my bulldozer because even though the board makes those decisions, I was given credit for it. So I believe, I like the idea, but my thought would be, why don't we ask, not for them to direct the traffic, tell us what we have to do, but ask, what do you recommend we do with these pews? What do you recommend we do with this furniture? That I'm sure somebody has saved this furniture from somewhere, sometime. So my thought is, before we make a definite decision, even though I think the right decision would be to use this as a better space, I think the things that are in there that we want to do something with, let's at least ask, what are some suggestions of, how do we take this stuff out? Where do we put it? How can we refurbish it? And I think even though you might think that saying that we build something out of it, as soon as you start changing it from what it is, and because it's so old, but that's my opinion. My opinion is if we just ask, what can we do with this stuff? Not the use of the facility. We want to use the facility for more events, but now that we know that, what do we do with this stuff?
And don't forget about the piano.
Oh, God, yes.
Oh, yeah, that piano.
And that's, and they were waiting.
Right now, you can't, I mean, where was the piano?
The piano was going to go, so it's not in...
Like in the front, right?
It's up to the, so where this one bench is, you can't really tell from the picture.
On the other side, it's that chair.
Yeah. That's where they were going to stick it. So opposite of where the chair lift is, is where the piano was going to go. And they still are waiting for authorization to get the bag delivered. So he's still holding on to it. It's already been paid for. He has to get...
Yeah, I think it would be great in there.
Yeah, exactly.
Even with whatever programs going on. We've had a handful of theater groups reach out, choir groups reach out. I mean, it's a huge little chapel. I mean, I think it would be awesome for a magnitude of things. And I'm totally on board. We'll go to the next historical meeting. Or you don't have to go, I'll go.
Why not? What would be appropriate maybe would be to call a meeting of the Historical Committees? Because as we're preparing and planning for our budget and everything else, and if we do want to plan any kind of spring program that might be able to use that facility, we need to get a jump on it. So what if we just ask?
Special meeting?
And have a special meeting. And that special meeting, you know, in attendance, Commissioner Marley is the liaison. Commissioner Skrol has been most gracious in going to those meetings. But, you know, if need be, we could send even another representative from the board so that you'd have, you know, more than one opinion, not a quorum, but, you know, a couple of board members. Do you think that would be appropriate?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Well, I think, and I think it is a Parks and Rec facility. And I do, personally, I like the idea, and I like the idea of using it. It's, that's what we have it there for. But my only thought would be, let's meet with them, and if nothing else, see what their suggestions might be. But that's a very small group that, right now, the bigger picture is that we've got a lot of citizens that could go to classes and stuff in there that would make it a wise choice financially to...
Yeah, and partnerships with other entities. You know, we do a lot with the FTCC. We also, their summer skate program, depending on what class or camps that are coming here. I mean, that could be a potential pretty cool spot. Because they have some stipulations when it comes to...
Well, and you've got listed Sweet Tea Shakespeare. And we did a theater group at my business, an outdoor theater. And it was well received and well attended. And they wanted, the thought at that time was, could we use it? Of course, it wasn't ready for anything like that, so that would be... So would you want to? Do you think there would be possible to do something sooner if the staff can get with them?
Send an email out.
Try an email.
So Marco mentioned something about February 1st.
Because I know, I know they all work, so that's, I would, I mean, honestly, I would just stick to the current meeting that they have. That way, we know they're going to show up.
When is our next meeting? So we meet before they meet? So maybe can we see if advance notice, they can meet before we meet again so a decision could be made when we meet again? Okay, well, let's just leave that to coordination. Does that sound?
Do you think it would be, do you think we should push back the opening date? Wait until we know for sure? Because, I mean, we'll push it out and publicize it in a way, whichever route we go, whether it kind of stays the way it is, or it's really utilized as another facility.
Do you want the piano in it for the opening, or?
I mean, if the piano's going in, the piano should be in it.
Yeah. What impact is it going to have if we push it back? None, right?
But if we do an opening in February 1st, not really knowing the direction of what it's going to be, because we can tailor the marketing and everything for it, depending on, and push it to the public for another space to use. So if we're waiting for an answer on the direction we're going with it, should we push back the ribbon cutting, or do you want to?
What do you recommend?
I say we figure out the goal and the direction of it first.
That's what I said the first time.
And then, and then push it to the public with what we decide has a town to do with it.
Okay. Well, you want to see if that, their next meeting? I know they've canceled and rearranged meetings before. Maybe we could schedule their meeting so that then by the next board meeting on the 6th, this board could have the direction to go, and then maybe that week, have our ribbon cutting or something. Would that work? Because y'all will have an idea of the direction after your meeting.
Well, there's also talks about removal of railing and stuff like that, so...
So the things that are going to change what's been currently fixed, because some of those things were worked on, I think that's where you need some, if nothing more, just an opportunity to give an opinion. And then this board can take it from there. But right now, we'd be making it without input.
Now, with the railings, that only came up because if we do do theater and chorus and choir groups, the upper level of the altar is really tight, and I think the railings is like coofy apart.
If you keep the railings, they would probably be somewhat...
Yeah, they're not very sturdy.
They're very, they're very unstable.
And my concern is, because have you seen the carpet? How the sun has bleached spots of it? So if you remove that railing, I wonder if you're going to have to replace the carpeting in that area too. So, yeah, it's a double-edged sword, I mean, you know.
Look, we just, we riding up and down the street. I'm tired of riding, you know. So what direction are we going to go in now? I mean, I'm not, but we got to make a decision.
We're going to have, they're going to meet with Historical Committee, and then the recommendation will be including what's going to happen with the stuff that's inside the building.
That'll work.
And then we'll move from there. And we'll make our, put it on our agenda for February the 6th. Yep.
You can always do it via Zoom if they can make it.
That's right.
Look at the possibility of doing a Zoom meeting.
Do we need to have all of them there, or can we get, I mean, can we, I mean, because we've worked with the Historical Committee.
They're hitting me up via text, so we can meet February 1st.
There you go.
All right. Of course, it's an election year, so, never mind. I won't say who that's from.
February 1st, do they have a time?
Sharon, Sharon, do we have a time? Message me with the time, Sharon.
Most of the meetings are 6:00 PM.
There we go.
Did that work for you? 6:00 PM, February 1st?
Got a plan.
Did that work for the town? Yep, meet at the chapel.
Meet at the chapel, Sharon.
6:00 PM.
Email coming up.
Historical Committee. And then that would be a change from their regular meeting, so that way, it would make it better for them that they would already, that would be their regular meeting, too. Does that work for you guys?
That's fine.
All righty then, we're good. We'll see you again. All right, the next thing on our agenda is reports. And does anybody have any questions about any of our reports? You did receive our town manager's report via email. So you got anything to add to it? Okay. All right, anything else? Anything for the good now? As far as the committees, I don't think today's an update day, so we're good to go?
I have one update.
Okay, go ahead.
The $50,000 grant that the Veterans Affairs Committee put in for has been approved.
Good.
Very good. Thank you. Good job. Okay, if not, there's anything else, at this time, do we have a motion for our closed session? Any staff comments? No? Okay, go right here.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 14331811A3 to consult with the attorney on matters within the attorney-client privilege and pursuant to NCGS 14331811A6 to discuss personnel matters.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, we'll beg your patience. We'll be back as quick as we can. This will go to the front conference room. At this time, I'll call our meeting back to order. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move the seal of the minutes of the closed sessions to such time as the release of the information would no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session, and further no action was taken.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed?
Motion to a jury.
There you go.
Motion to a jury. We'll see you Wednesday evening, 5:30.